Item number one, which is officially to call the meeting to order. Ms. Ramirez, can you please confirm the quorum?
Yes, ma'am. We have yourself, Trustee Dr. Mackey, Trustee Steve, Vice Chair Romero. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Item number two, safety message invocation and pledge of allegiance. At this time, I would like to ask Mr. Matthew Jones to provide the safety message invocation and pledge of allegiance. Mr. Jones, please proceed with the safety message invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Board. First, I want to review the evacuation procedures so that we are prepared to be safe in the event of an emergency. If you hear the fire alarm, follow the instructions announced through the P A system. If asked to evacuate, use the glass door exiting out of the boardroom to the outside. If that door is blocked, use the back door. Verbally alert others in the room and evacuate. Then move to the main parking lot in front of the building or the A T and T parking lot over the McCullough Brooklyn bridges. In the event of a situation like this, our security team will be monitoring the situation and will notify the appropriate emergency services and team members. We also have employees nearby who are trained to administer first aid if needed. Safety is a top priority at CPS Energy, and while we hope this information is never needed, we want to be sure we are always ready. Now, if you will please stand with me for an invocation. We are thankful for this day that you have given us, for its blessings, its opportunities, its challenges. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing important responsibilities. We ask that you would guide our thoughts and our actions so that we may have a successful meeting of the CPS Energy Board of Trustees. Help us to accomplish our goals while displaying your character. Help us to do good, to be honest, to serve others, and to fulfill our obligations to our community. We pray these things in your name. Amen. Now, if you'll please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you again, Mr. Jones, for a lovely message. The next item, number three, which is public comment. Ms. Natalia Lopez, can you please proceed with public comment?
Public comment provides an opportunity for members of the public to share thoughts on posted agenda items for this meeting. We will invite pre-registered speakers to speak. They may only address the board on CPS Energy-related business posted on the agenda. Speakers should state their first and last name, the organization or group they represent, and the agenda item they will speak about. For this meeting, we have two in-person speakers. Each speaker will have two minutes to speak. Thomas, will you please cue the timer? Our first speaker is Henrietta LaGrange, followed by Giancarlo Zuluera.
Thank you. My name is Henrietta LaGrange, member of the Mulberry Street girl gang, Lulac, Raza Unida, and Growing Up Brown, and anybody that will accept me. Thank you for allowing me to be here. It is such a pleasure, and I can feel every worker in here, how proud they are to be here. You know, I come in here and it's just like everybody's walking on air because they are so proud of being a CPS employee. And I agree with you. It is great to be part of CPS employee with our C E O, Rudy Garza, who has been doing not a good job, because that's not enough word, a good enough word to use. So I went into the dictionary and the dictionary says it's a difficult word because he qualifies in all the adjectives that you're looking for. You're amazing, Mr. Garza. Thank you for being here. And that's what I'm addressing, is Mr. Garza here. Because I go out there and if I stop at a construction site, because I love construction, I ask him, "How is Mr. Garza doing?" He says, "He's doing great." And we love having him here because safety is his number one priority. And let me tell you, for the women out there like myself, I'm going to say a little quote by Ruth Bader Ginsburg. Women belong in all places where decisions are being made. Ladies out there, empower yourself with this comment because Ms. Ginsburg was an amazing woman and she never gave up. And I have a pin, and this pin will go to Janie Gonzalez. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Our next speaker is Giancarlo Zuluera. That was our last registered speaker. I will now turn the meeting back to Chair Gonzalez.
Ms. Natalia, we'll now move to item number four, which is Chair's remarks. I would like to begin our meeting with a couple of remarks. Again, it's an exciting time to connect with CPS Energy, specifically at community events. As you know, high summer bills are around the corner, and for some already are experiencing this. So the summer month often results, as mentioned, in higher bills due to increased energy use. We want our customers to be prepared and informed. One way to achieve this is by participating in our upcoming community events. For example, this past weekend, CPS Energy hosted an event at Dwight Middle School in D 4, not too far from my home. So it's really nice to see CPS out there in the community. Upcoming events. We have a robust schedule of community events throughout June and early July. These events offer a great opportunity for our customers to learn about bill assistance programs and other available resources. This weekend, I want to thank Richard Medina. We were able to address some reportings on Facebook on the Thompson Neighborhood App, for example. It's a great example of how CPS even tracks social media and then addresses concerns. And so thank you, Richard, for taking care of that over the weekend. Energy programs. We encourage everyone to learn about our energy conservation initiatives, rebate programs, and other offerings that help manage and reduce energy usage. To make it fun and easier, we're introducing Crews: a Chameleon. Sorry, I don't have an example of that. I begged for one, we couldn't get it on time. But starting today, you will see our new communication featuring Crews: a Chameleon. Crews will provide energy-saving tips in both English and Spanish to help our customers manage their energy use more effectively. And again, the programs that we have are not all, again, income-related. You'll be surprised, as a small business, you will also qualify for some of these programs that we have. Customer engagement. Again, a big shout-out to our customer resource unit, known as C R U. They've been very active, engaging in the community. For example, 10 times per day, six days a week. Our team is always ready to assist customers with their energy needs and questions. And again, I want to remind you of the budget payment plan. To help avoid the surprise of high bills, our budget payment plan allows customers to average their energy expenses, and we urge our customers to call us at (210) 353-2222. Again, that phone number is (210) 353-2222 for assistance and to learn more about these beneficial programs. And again, I believe behind me, behind, on the PowerPoint, the screen, is the latest schedule of community resource fairs, weatherization drive-throughs, and small and business support fairs. These events, again, are designed to provide valuable information and support our customers, large or small. Don't forget to visit our website and follow us on social media for all things CPS Energy. I want to stress that we are here for you. This is what CPS is all about. We are one team here to support you. And on a different note, this month CPS Energy is supporting, is observing and supporting Pride Month. June is Pride Month, a time to honor and celebrate the L G B T Q community. Showcasing our workforce is an opportunity, again, to showcase a diversity workforce at CPS Energy and for the team members to learn more about one another. This month, there was an opportunity to special, to highlight a special member of the team, and his name is Michael Thurston, a project program lead for corporate responsibility. I've known Michael for years, even when he was at Lifefun. And so here's a great individual, just an outstanding citizen of the community who we're lucky to have, who shared his story with us. So thank you, Michael, for doing that. I understand and also respect that others may not hold, hold different values and beliefs when it comes to celebrating Pride Month, and I respect that. And my next comment is not meant to be controversial or political, but as a mother to an adult child who chose to live her true self, I want to express first my love to her for her unique self and my support for Team Pride. Thank you again for those who embrace and support this spirit of Pride Month. So thank you, CPS Energy. On that note, we're going to go ahead and move on to item number five, which is approval of the consent items. And we have the following items. A, payment to the city of San Antonio for May 2024. B, minutes from the May regular board meeting held on May 20, 2024. And C, procurement items. We have none. Do I have a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, a first by Dr. Mackey and then Dr. Romero. Ms. Ramirez, would you please proceed with the roll call?
Yes, sir. Trustee Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Trustee Steve?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Chair?
Yes.
Chair?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is committee reports. In lieu of reading the committee reports aloud, the following report is available in your board book for review. A, Operations Oversight Committee, held on May 6, 2024. B, Personnel Committee, meeting held on May 29, 2024. Does the board have any questions or comments?
No.
I give a couple of minutes just for other trustees to review. Okay. They will be accepted as submitted. We will now move to item, agenda item number seven. Ms. Ramirez, please take the board into executive session.
Yes, ma'am. At this time, the board is going to recess into executive session to discuss matters that have been duly posted under several provisions of Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, including two matters under the personnel exception, which is Section 551.074. It is 1:13 P M. as we go to executive session.
Ms. Fambides, if you could bring us back from executive session, please.
Yes, ma'am. It is 2:06 PM and the board has concluded the executive session. I can confirm that there were no votes taken and no matters were discussed that were not part of the posted agenda. We have a quorum. All members present.
Thank you, Ms. Fambides. If we now move to agenda item number eight, FY 2024 CEO Performance Overview and Vote on Compensation Adjustments. This presentation will be made by Mrs. Lisa Lewis. Ms. Lisa?
Good afternoon, trustees. No slides for this presentation. Just a reminder of the process that the board goes through annually to evaluate CEO performance. The performance year is aligned to the fiscal year, meaning that the most recent performance period is February 1, 2023, through January 31 of 2024. The Personnel Committee met on March 19th to review the performance evaluation process. The corporate metric performance was finalized and reported to trustees at the March 25 trustee meeting through the enterprise scorecard. And at that same meeting, trustees were asked to provide feedback about the CEO to the Personnel Committee. The committee then met April 9th to receive the CEO's performance summary for their consideration. And the Personnel Committee met on May 29th with the CEO to conduct his performance review. At that meeting, the committee also met with a third-party expert to discuss scorecard performance measures and compensation data. That is all I have to share with you this afternoon.
Again, as Chair of the Personnel Committee, Ms. Lisa Lewis has outlined the performance overview. At this moment, we also have met, and there is a motion to support the compensation. State the recommendation. Any feedback? Dr. Mackey?
CEO Performance and Compensation Overview. As this agenda stated, the Board of Trustees met in an executive session to discuss the performance of CPS Energy CEO Rudy Garza for the period ended January 31, 2024. To assess his performance, the board reviewed the CEO's scorecard, which include quantitative metrics for customer satisfaction, financial performance, operational excellence. The metrics were challenging, and they help ensure that the company continue moving forward. The board also had important strategic objectives for the CEO that include securing new generation, addressing reliability and resilience for the long term, and ensuring robust strategic planning for the future. Under the leadership of Mr. Garza, CPS Energy has improved customers' satisfaction rating, improved the performance, the financial conditions of the utility in relation to past due accounts, and increased reliability through extensive focus on tree trimming, infrastructure improvement, and securing current and future generation resources. In addition, the board reviewed information prepared by Willis Todd Watson regarding total compensation for CEOs in the energy utility sector. And looking at more than a dozen comparable companies across the industry, including for profit and municipal utilities, Mr. Garza's salary is a fraction of the average for CEOs, even though Mr. Garza has the same accountability as his peers. And those accountabilities have increased as operation grows to include assets across Texas. Based on this information, I move that the board recognize Mr. Garza's physical year 2024 accomplishments with an increase to Mr. Garza's base salary effective May 26, 2024 of 13.2% from $655,000 per year to $742,000 per year. of 13.2% from $655,000 per year to $742,000 per year. Retention performance in physical year 2025 and 2026 up to 10% base pay per year to be held and deferred to the conclusion of Mr. Garza's current contract, January 1, 2026. This salary will be withheld to induce Mr. Garza to remain with the company through the full contracted period as long as he remain in good standing. Furthermore, I move that we direct CPS Energy staff and outside counsel to prepare an update to the CEO's contract to reflect the address adjustments for approval by the Personnel Committee.
Second emotion? Any discussion?
Who's sucking? Okay.
Open for discussion? Go ahead.
Yeah, so first, I think it should be noted that the compensation of the CEO of CPS is a significant departure from business as usual, as it was done 2019 and prior. I think this board and this organization with all prudence ended the incentive structure that was in place prior to. And moving forward, we called for a reevaluation of how it would be done going forward. And so I want to thank the Personnel Committee for this new process that not only moves to compensate the leader of this organization in a fair manner, but also recognizes the ability for our public utility to retain good talent. And here's why I think, why, so, number one, Mayor Hargberg always used to tell me that it's easy to be a good captain in calm water. Rudy Garza and his team deserve an immense amount of credit for bringing this utility back to a solid position from the darkness of 2021. It's not a small feat. In fact, in 2021, this company's financial position, its ability to serve its customers reliably, its ability to do so affordably were in question. Today, I am very pleased to say that this publicly-owned utility, which again, we are caretaking this organization on behalf of the million-plus residents who are served by it, this organization, in the midst of probably the most uncertain time in the history for the energy industry, is in the strongest position it has been to accomplish that future. So Rudy's done a great job, the team, this is a reflective, reflection of every member of the team, from the executive, the executives in this organization, to the journeymen, to everybody in between, as well as those folks who are out there working the neighborhoods to make sure that we get folks the service that they need in difficult times. So again, I want to compliment the Personnel Committee for being cognizant of the pressures of a public utility to not only compensate fairly, but do so prudently. I'm glad we're doing it this way. Again, I hope that going forward, in the years ahead, this new pay structure allows us to retain good talent, but also compensate folks fairly while being mindful of the fact that we continue to do so on behalf of the public and by the public's authority and payments. So, thank you very much.
Mr. Steen?
So I continue to be disappointed that Rudy Garza dismantled CPS Energy's Compensation at Risk/Incentive Program, not only for his CEO position, but also for CPS Energy's senior leadership team. At our April 25, 2022 board meeting, Mr. Garza acknowledged that CPS Energy's EIP, and that stands for Executive Incentive Program, was suspended during the pandemic by then-CEO Paula Gold Williams. He continued by noting that the EIP had become, quote, "a difficult community conversation", close quote, and stated, quote, "We canceled the EIP outright, which is tied to our metrics", close quote. Again, at this same April 25, 2022 board meeting, Mr. Garza reported that he'd asked Lisa Lewis to look into, look at an incentive program more in line with other public power companies and to do so by the end of 2022. And I went back and listened to it, but Mr. Garza mentioned four times that Ms. Lewis would do this by the end of the year, that is, by the end of 2022. And finally, in response to my question of who specifically put an end to the incentive program, Mr. Garza responded, quote, "That's my decision", close quote. To my knowledge, Mr. Garza never followed up with an alternative incentive program like he said he'd do at our April 25, 2022 board meeting. What I want to emphasize today is that Mr. Garza's elimination of the Compensation at Risk/Incentive Program contributed in a not insubstantial way to the exodus of senior management that's occurred. Our top executives expect to be paid close to what their peers in the industry are paid, and when they're not, they depart for greener pastures. And I've got a copy of an org chart with photos of the senior leadership team just a few years ago that can be used to document the fact that in recent years, we've lost seven of our eight highest-ranking executives. The only one of the eight still with CPS Energy today is Rudy Garza. To summarize, compared to their peers, our senior leadership team members are remarkably underpaid, so I support boosting the compensation for the CEO position. However, even when it's increased, it'll still be inadequate, and that inadequacy compresses the compensation of every other member of the senior leadership team. Thank you.
Dr. Mer? Anything?
I just want to add again, where we've arrived to, and thank you for your comments, Mayor, it's been a lot of work. It's been three years. For anybody to think that this conversation or compensation does happen overnight, it has not. I think that the CPS was disrupted by, again, weather, it was disrupted by leadership. And Mr. Steen is right, you know, again, seven, seven C-suite executives are no longer here. Those were self-selected resignations. This was not something that we forced on them. They chose to resign. And that's, again, the power of an individual who works for an organization. They can leave whenever they want. Again, this has been a lot of work. It's been an honor and a privilege, and it's also very humbling to go out there in the community and really hear what people want and what people have wanted of CPS, is a leader that's transparent, that we put the community first. And what I love about representing CPS, that the employees who work here care about the organization they work for. They care. And this is why we do the work. We do it for you. We do it also to not add more pressure, which I'm most proud of, to add more rate pressure to the community. Some of the decisions we've made as a board will transform this community for the better. We won't see it or understand it today, but I will guarantee you, 10 years from now, those decisions to buy the recent acquisition saves millions of dollars to the community, again, reduces rate pressure. Everything that we're doing today is a reflection of making the community first. And so I am proud to stand and lead, not only with the employees, but also lead with the board, our mayor, and Rudy. So thank you, Rudy, for the hard work, because three years of working really hard to gain the trust. And so I want to thank you for your leadership and thank the team again, and our Board of Trustees who also have held him accountable in uncomfortable conversations, but necessary conversations. So thank you, Board of Trustees, as well.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes, I've been on this board about six and a half years. Been on this board about six and a half years. And I think Rudy is doing a great job in what he's doing, but I beg the difference in, one person didn't leave on that person's own. They made some mistakes. Two other people left because they got more money. We did talk to them. We didn't have the money to keep them. And I have the receipts on the three people that I just mentioned. So I don't know, in one person that we tried to talk to stay in a position, that he retired. He came up here and told us he flat retired. So when we start talking about giving receipts to individuals while they leaving, they have reasons for leaving. And so that's a decision that they make, you know? We have, you know, Rudy hasn't, I haven't seen a succession plan, and, you know, the staff that we have now, but I think, you know, Rudy has a good team put together, and he's moving it forward since, you know, since he's been the permanent CEO. And he's well-deserved of this, that we have documented that I read a few minutes ago. But when we say things like that, you know, bring receipts with it. Bring receipts with that, because that's not true, because y'all, you wasn't here. But there was a reason why one person left. They didn't leave them on their own. But the other two persons, people, they came up here and said, they made more money. I can't fault them for that. We're not going to fault Rudy when he leaves for more money. But we trying to bring this salary intact, that if we ever have to go back out there, at least we got something that we can work with. Because he's well, doing a great job, and he's underpaid for the job he's doing today. Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez.
If we can have a roll call? Roll call?
Yes, we have a motion and a second in favor of the recommendation of the Personnel Committee. Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Trustee Steen?
Yes.
Mayor? Vice Chair?
Yes.
Chair?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is, go ahead, the resolution supporting, and actually, we're going to discuss this, but Resolution Supporting FY 2025 CEO Scorecard and Metrics, and it's a draft form, and it was made public to, it was again, public. If you could please read the resolution of what we just voted on, I'm sorry about that. We did make a motion. No, not the real scorecard. We have a new chair. All in favor, aye. Open for discussion.
Okay, this is a resolution supporting the fiscal year 2025 CEO Scorecard and Metrics, whereas CPS Energy is a municipally-owned utility of the city of San Antonio. And whereas Section 1502.070 of the Texas Government Code provides that the powers and duties of the CPS Energy Board of Trustees is determined through the proceedings of the city of San Antonio and its bond ordinances. And whereas these bond ordinances best the management and control of CPS Energy with the Board of Trustees, and provides that the board may appoint a president and CEO. And whereas the president and board of, sorry, whereas the CPS Energy Board of Trustees has consistently appointed a president and CEO to develop the strategic direction and provide for the overall management of CPS Energy's operations. And whereas the CPS Energy Board of Trustees has created a Personnel Committee, which is charged with managing the performance of the president and CEO as the Board of Trustees' sole employee. And whereas the Personnel Committee Charter directs the committee to report to the board the appropriate CEO performance metrics consistent with CPS Energy's long-term vision and strategic objectives. And whereas the Personnel Committee establishes a CEO Scorecard each year, which represents the CEO performance metrics that align with the CPS Energy enterprise metrics and strategic objectives. And whereas the enterprise measures have been developed in consultation with a third-party to identify considerations, challenge assumptions, and compare to benchmarks. And whereas, for this fiscal year, the Personnel Committee utilized the enterprise measures validated by H. Bailey Group LLC, and the established Vision 2027 strategic plan to develop the fiscal year 2025 CEO Scorecard. And whereas, the Board of Trustees provides feedback to management in the development and establishment of these enterprise measures each year. And whereas, the fiscal year 2025 CEO Scorecard drives the Board of Trustees' expectations for the president and CEO, which then translates to the organization's performance. And whereas, this year, the Personnel Committee has reported to the appropriate, has reported the appropriate CEO performance metrics for the president and CEO, Mr. Rudy D. Garza, to this board with the fiscal year 2025 CEO Scorecard, and has offered an opportunity for input and feedback from all board members. Now therefore, be it resolved, the CPS Energy Board of Trustees confirms and supports that this process and affirms that the fiscal year 2025 CEO Scorecard is the means to measure the performance this fiscal year of the CPS Energy President and CEO, Mr. Rudy D. Garza.
Mr. Steen?
Ms. Gonzalez, do we have the ability to put it up on the screen?
Sure, we sure do.
All right.
Can someone, please, take the time to put the scorecard on the screen? And it's page 12 for trustees.
Do you want me to go ahead?
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Steen.
So the proposed board resolution asks, first, that we confirm the process, and, second, that we affirm what's called the fiscal year 2025 CEO Scorecard as the preferred means to measure Rudy Garza's performance for fiscal year 2025, the fiscal year, by the way, that we're already five months into. It's an interesting metrics journey we've taken to get where we are today. I detail this history in remarks summated at our February 5, 2024 board meeting. Suffice it to say that in recent years, CPS Energy wasn't doing well at all achieving the metrics we'd adopted over a decade ago. And so a process was initiated, over my objections, to discard those metrics and substitute in their place easier-to-achieve metrics. For the last 13 years, we've been guided by the eminent firm of Scott &amp; Madden, arguably number one in the field of performance management consulting. But the Atlanta firm of Scott &amp; Madden was eased out and replaced by the Austin firm of H. Bailey Group LLC. It's noteworthy that Scott &amp; Madden is some 40 years old and has around 200 employees, while H. Bailey Group is four years old and is a one-person shop. In any case, for fiscal year 2023, CPS Energy's overall Tier One metrics score was 10 out of 16. We've called this report our, our report card, we've called this our report card, so our grade was a 63 or D minus. I was disappointed, but hope management would take this as a challenge to try harder and perform much better. But regrettably, the response was to start softening expectations and watering down targets for fiscal year 2024. But it didn't stop there. Ultimately, the decision was made to entirely jettison our 16 Tier One metrics and adopt eight enterprise metrics. Only two of the 16 made it into the eight, and of the six metrics CPS Energy failed to achieve in fiscal year 2023, only one appears in the recasting. Notably, this major change in CPS Energy's metrics was implemented without a board vote. The board was merely informed and solicited for feedback at our February 5, 2024 meeting. It's important to recap these substantial changes in our fiscal year 2025 annual enterprise scorecard, because the CEO scorecard document we're being asked to affirm today is derived from it and purportedly aligned with it. So I have a few comments, not very many, on the shortcomings of this proposed CEO Scorecard. First, if you'd put up slide 15. Is that 15? Okay. Then I'm, I'm sorry, then I'm looking.
It's page 15, that's slide 15.
Looking for the letter.
Letter was the homepage. That's 14. That's page 14.
My mistake.
That's okay.
So please put up slide 14. "In this introductory letter dated 6/19/24, notice the last sentence of the first paragraph, where it is asserted that the recommended metrics are based on a thorough review of best practices from leading utilities, but the only two utilities mentioned in the letter are Austin Energy and oddly enough CPS Energy. And neither this letter nor the proposed CEO Scorecard is benchmarking mentioned, so I'm assuming that this very valuable process has been de-emphasized." Second, the document itself seems hastily put together and not well-thought-out. For example, it's, if we can go to the document, the next page, it's divided into four pillars. Pillar one, operational evolutions. Pillar two, financial stability. Pillar three, customer experience. And pillar four, team culture and community partnership. I'm not certain why pillars two and four have 25% in parentheses after them, and pillars one and three do not. Maybe that's an oversight. Further, on page 15, goals for fiscal year 2025, on page 15, goals for fiscal year 2025, and of course, that's the fiscal year we're currently intercited, but beginning at the top of the next page, page 16, and running through the end of the document, there's no further mention of fiscal year 2025 goals. Instead, fiscal year 24 goals are mentioned 10 times. As we all know, fiscal year 2024 was concluded January 31, 2024, so this is confusing. Also confusing is that virtually the same ERP metric appears twice in the document. If we're looking at slide 15 in the middle of the page, is that, which one are we looking at, 16? If you could go back to 15. It's like an eye test in the doctor's office. Is that 15? Is that 15? It must be. Yeah, right there. You see, it says, it says innovation and modernization, and so it says metric type, implementation of Phase One of the ERP system, fiscal year 2025 goals, successfully complete Phase One within the project timeline and budget, and it has some rating criteria. So now if we went to, if we went to Slide 17, and under digital transformation, it appears to me to be the same thing. Metric type, implement of Phase One ERP. Again, it should be 2025 goals, it's 2024 goals, complete within the project timeline and budget, and then there's rating criteria. So surely this duplication's a mistake. The ERP is in there twice. Third, many of the goals are not appropriate. For example, there's what's termed liquidity cushion, and that's on Slide 16, if we could put that up. As we all know, days cash on hand, abbreviated DCOH, represents the number of days of operating expenses CPS Energy can pay with current cash, so of course, the higher the number, the better. It's indicated this is a liquidity measure and one of the big three financial metrics for credit rating agencies. Their threshold is 150 days, so why is this goal mistakenly identified as the fiscal year 2024 goal to maintain 90 days of cash and 120 days of liquidity? I don't understand that. Mr. Garza, if you don't mind, if I could finish and then you were getting ready to respond. Another inappropriate goal is at the bottom of Page 16, labeled bond rating stability. Again, the confusion about fiscal year 2024 goals. Three and a half years ago, following Winter Storm Uri, all three credit rating agencies downgraded CPS Energy, and that downgraded status continues to this day. Lately, all three agencies have assigned us a stable outlook, which means they believe our ratings are not likely to be changed. I believe strongly that through metric goal setting, we should be challenging our CEO to restore our ratings instead of making it his goal to maintain our current downgraded ratings. I could point out other flaws in the various CEO metrics, but in the interest of time, I'll just note one glaring omission, and that's a critical metric not included on the CEO Scorecard, and that's our customers who for years have been in arrears, that is past due on their CPS Energy bills. As of April 30, 2024, there are 185,000 past due accounts in the amount of $145 million. Since this seemingly intractable situation has dragged on for years and is considered by many to be one of CPS Energy's biggest concern slash risk, why aren't we holding our CEO accountable for progress in this area? In other words, why is it on this document? And in my mind, that's a huge oversight. Finally, put up Slide 18, please. In this summary, I see at least three errors. There's a reference to five pillars, but only four pillars are cited in the preceding outline. There's a reference to Vision 2025, when our plan is Vision 2027, and there's a reference to fiscal year 2024 goals, when CPS Energy's fiscal year 2024 ended earlier this year on January 31. In closing, I want to point out that with the anticipated passage of this resolution, CPS Energy's goalposts will continue to be moved closer and closer, and it'll be no surprise when we end up with vastly improved scorecards for both the enterprise and the CEO when fiscal year 2025 draws to a close seven months from now. It's a good bet that we'll go from a D minus on our scorecard to a perfect score, not by dramatically improving performance, but by changing methodology. I'll repeat what I've said previously, to be effective, metrics must be calibrated so that they drive changes, innovations, and improvements, as well as help an enterprise and its CEO focus employees and resources on what's important. To be effective, the metrics have to be appropriately aspirational, challenging, and yes, tough. Hitting the target should mean that our company is firing on all cylinders, that is, operating at the highest level. Regrettably, CPS Energy continues to head in the wrong direction if this Board adopts this resolution today. Softening expectations, lowering targets, and even tossing aside metrics when it's challenging to meet targets is called redefining success, and regrettably, CPS Energy is actively engaged in redefining success. One last thing, Ms. Ramirez, I respectfully ask you to reflect in the minutes my ongoing concerns with the weakening of both our enterprise and CEO metrics, as well as the other reasons I've set forth for voting no on this resolution before us. Thank you.
Let me clarify, Trustee Steen, there were multiple versions of this document that, you know, were floating around there. I think we picked up the wrong one, so we will pick up the right one and get it back out to the, to the Board for re-review, but it's just to perfect, you know, some of the items that you brought up, so let us make sure, you know, we're working off the right draft and put, write it down as an action item that we will recirculate this as soon as possible.
Dr. Romero?
I think metrics are so important, and yet, I think, I find them the most frustrating part of what we do because they're just, they are what they are, and they're always a little bit problematic, and we have seen these before, and I really appreciate the alignment and the objectivity here, but I don't know why this didn't really occur to me before. I guess I'm not seeing where the decarbonization and the generation plan goals are incorporated in the scorecard.
So the beauty of providing a draft, which historically has never been made one public by the Personnel Committee, two, has had feedback from other trustees, this is why it's called a draft. The draft is for all our trustees to provide your feedback. Based on your feedback, we'll improve it, and then we can then go for a vote. And so thank you, Dr., as always, Dr. Romero, for your insightful feedback, and I'm looking forward to adding to it. Dr. Mackey and then the mayor.
I want to thank Ms. Gonzalez for, you know, on the Personnel Committee putting this together. Yes, we did see some things, and I want to thank Mr. Steen for bringing some clarity and some, some things that was in there. That was, it's great, and that's why it's called a draft, you know, but being a, being a prior superintendent in five different districts, you know, I've always shared with my board members, if you ever have a chance and you see something that we could have had corrected, then give us a call, because, you know, I always thought, you know, that was, you know, when you have good intentions in your heart, you do things like that. You give them a call, and we could have bring clarity to things like this if, you know, ahead of time. There's the attorney and the CEO, just call them and bring it to their attention. You know, I brought some stuff to his attention, and, you know, he addresses it, you know, when that time comes, but, and that's all I have to say about it. It's a draft, and this is where we start, this is starting point, and we have, wherever we have to move forward to make it better, then that's our job to get better at this. So they're starting with a draft, and everybody had this, we've been talking about this for a year and a half. We finally put it on the table complaining that we didn't get on the table. Now it's on the table. Now, you know, throughout the seven years I've been here, I could have brought concerns, but I always called behind the scene to try to say, hey, I didn't understand this, didn't know this, maybe these things being corrected, so, but I understand, you know, you know, we just need to make this better and do a better job. Thank you.
Here.
I just, I just have a couple of comments as it relates to redefining success. So first of all, I think the public is more than just a little annoyed by the fact that there's a cottage industry of compensation consultants on public utilities. So number one, I thought it, I think it is extremely appropriate for us to reevaluate what our metrics are, particularly because we're here talking about, you know, a dozen, maybe more, metrics about how we should compensate the CEO in the future, and...
The other thing that I hear up here is transparency.
Well, sure, and I'm going to get to that. So, look, this is a public utility. Everything we do is because the public gives us their trust, and in terms of defining success, I think we do need to redefine success, because redefining success for the public in this utility is whether or not they're, we're in better position to keep their lights on, whether or not we can keep their lights on affordably, whether or not we're addressing the concerns that they have brought to us justifiably about we're dealing with issues related to air quality and the environment appropriately. Those are the metrics for success that the public care about, and, you know, if we can't pass a smell test on the, you know, 30 metrics that we're putting forward to transparently tell that story, then we're not hitting the right mark. So I think it's extremely appropriate that we're taking a look at this. I appreciate you clarifying that this is a draft. Obviously, we'll provide input to make it a better, a better tool, but, you know, I think we are in a much better and appropriate position to be able to have a conversation, a two-way conversation with the public about what they expect from us as Board members of this organization, what they expect from the organization to perform, when we can go out and say, yes, we are in a much better position, given the uncertainty of the environment and the industry, to do what we are supposed to do, which is to provide electricity affordably for all the residents of our community. The other thing I would say is that we continue to talk about, Trustee Steen, about this bond outlook. In 2021, and the record will show that virtually every utility, public utility, public or not, was downgraded in Texas because of what happened in Winter Storm Uri. We were in tough, tough shape. We didn't even know if we would be able to get the lights on, let alone do that affordably. And so, yeah, we were, we were downgraded, as everybody else was, and that's not a good position to be. It certainly didn't help our financial stability, and we were given a negative outlook. But the outlook is, and I'm just reading directly from Fitch here, "A rating watch indicates there is a heightened probability of a rating change and the likely direction of that change, whether it's positive, negative, evolving, et cetera." So I don't know what universe we are in if you are saying that because we went from negative outlook to stable, that that's not a good thing. If we were in negative outlook, and they're saying within the next year or two, we're probably going to be downgraded, an actual downgrade, and we have now moved past that, given all these challenges, you know, it's a real spin job to say otherwise, that it's not a good thing. So I'm, I definitely disagree with that interpretation, and I will continue to disagree with that interpretation because I'm tired of hearing about it. Thank you, Chair.
Dr. Mackey, I know you have the motion, so I'm asking as the Board Chair if you're open to withdrawing your motion so that we could defer the vote for the next Board Meeting with that deferment that would allow each trustee to provide feedback and provided a two-week window for that feedback to, to be able to bring back, to bring, be able to bring back the resolution at the next Board Meeting.
Absolutely.
Would you support the motion to withdraw to defer vote?
I will support withdrawing my motion in the event that all Board members have an opportunity to contact Mr. Garza with anything that needs to be on there or the Chair, and we take care of that, and let's move on to the next Board Meeting. I look forward to that.
Can I get roll call on that, or?
No.
No need for roll call?
Once the motion is withdrawn, we can proceed to Agenda Item Number 10.
All right, let's move to Item Number 10.
Trustee Steen raised a point, just, Belt and suspenders this one, Mayor. You were the second, so I just want to confirm that you're okay with withdrawing your second. Thank you.
Approved to withdraw, Dr. Mackey in a second by the mayor. If we can go ahead and move to Item Number 10, which is Community Input Committee Appointments. Kathy, Ms. Garcia, please proceed.
Okay, great. Good afternoon. Earlier this year, the Board voted on various changes to the Citizens Advisory Committee, transforming it into the Community Input Committee. As a reminder for those that might be watching this meeting, the CIC is intended to represent and communicate the views of the community, as well as provide input on key utility initiatives to the Board and to management. Some of the changes made were to the composition of the committee, amending some of the existing seats, and creating four new seats. So today, I'll be reviewing those changes, talking through the items listed on the screen here, and requesting your vote on the candidates being recommended for the open positions. As it was in the past, the Board will continue to approve all appointments to the CIC. So this slide shows the current committee members. You'll recall that the committee is made up of 15 members, one from each of the 10 City Council districts and five at-large. Current CIC members were given the opportunity to remain or roll over to the CIC. All have agreed to continue serving except for two members that have extenuating circumstances. You'll see on this slide, there are two boxes outlined in orange. We have an opening in the District 5 seat. That person who was serving in that position has moved away, so Councilman Castillo is bringing forward her recommendation today. And we have one at-large member whose term has expired. Following past protocol, the committee selects their candidate for the at-large position and brings that selection forward to you for Board approval. I do want to take just a minute to make sure there were some executive committee members that were going to come today, but I don't think they were able to make it. I was going to highlight their work. So the CIC will now be comprised of 19 members, with four new seats being filled by the Board, one from each of your respective Board quadrants, and now, at least two of the five at-large members must reside outside the San Antonio city limits. So that means they must reside in 31, in one of our 31 suburban cities or within Bear County. And again, the at-large positions are filled by the CIC, with the executive committee bringing their candidate to the committee, and then the committee bringing their selection to the Board. So today, before you, we have six candidates seeking your approval to join the CIC. And before I highlight them, I do want to take one moment to share. We have promoted and advertised the opportunity to participate in the CIC. We began promoting this on April 24, and the application process officially opened on April 29, and it stayed open for a little over three weeks. The open positions were advertised in a variety of ways, such as social media, newspaper advertisements, website updates, and local news coverage. We received 27 applications, eight of which were also eligible for the at-large position. So here are the four candidates for the Board Quadrant, and most of them were able to be here with us today, so as I mention their name, I'll ask that they just stand briefly. So for Quadrant 1, we have Christopher Fullerton, Chris, who is an attorney and is an advisor on energy and water matters, and is a former member of the Rate Advisory Committee. For Quadrant 2, we have Dana McGinnis. Dana was unable to be here today due to a prior commitment, but he is the founder of Mission Advisors, and, which is an energy investment advisory firm, and also a former member of the Rate Advisory Committee. We have, in Quadrant 3, Frank Dunn, Mr. Dunn, is owner of Frank Dunn Insurance Agency and is an insurance broker himself. And then in Quadrant 4, we have Peter Anoffrey. Peter is a former member of the Rate Advisory Committee and is also the Operations Administrator for the New Life Christian Center. We also have today Maria Nelson, Maria. So Maria is a marketing manager at Half. Half is a company here in San Antonio that is a full-service infrastructure consulting firm. And then we have City Council District 5, Dr. Julian Villarreal. Dr. Villarreal was unable to be here today, but he is an engineer with a local semiconductor company and is a District 5 community organizer with Climate Action SA Coalition. So that takes us to this slide where we have a slate of candidates for your consideration and approval.
Madam Chair, I, I move that we vote on each individual, one, each individual, and I'll make a motion on the first one, Christopher Fullerton.
Second. Is there a second? Is there a second for individual voting?
I think you, you actually don't have to move. Madam Chair, you have the discretion. You can determine whether we vote as a slate or whether we vote individually, if you just let me know.
Fine with what? I'm fine either way. Any other feedback? Okay, we'll vote per the motion of Dr. Mackey.
So I have a motion for the approval of Christopher Fullerton, and I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Okay, we can get a roll call? Call for discussion. I have a comment by Dr. Romero.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank everybody who applied in my quadrant, in my quadrant. Those are the applications that I saw. Everybody was really qualified that, that applied, and I really appreciate that. And it's hard to pick just one person. Christopher is, is very, very qualified. He was my appointee to, to the RAC and, and did a great job. And so I would appreciate your support for Chris.
And for Quadrant 4, which I represent the Southwest, I was actually extremely disappointed that we actually got one, one applicant. And so it's just, again, just to kind of demonstrate that despite our efforts to advertise, to speak to individuals, I only got one applicant. But the one applicant I got, I'm happy to report, he's been very active in the community, and I'm looking forward to him representing in Quadrant 4. The South Side is very dear to me, and so I know that Peter's going to do an excellent job. So thank you, Peter, for being that one brave soul who's committed to stay and engage in the community, and especially, again, an area that is one of the fastest-growing areas with diverse needs. And so I'm looking forward to your feedback on, on, on the new, on the new committee input committee.
So I have a motion and a second to approve our Quadrant 1 applicant, Christopher Fullerton. Was there any further discussion? Trustee Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Trustee Steen?
Yes.
Mayor? Vice Chair?
Yes.
Chair?
Yes.
The appointee for Quadrant 1 is approved. We'll move next to Quadrant 2, Dana McGinnis. Is there a motion to approve? I have a motion from Trustee Steen. Is there a second?
There's not a motion for a second. What I would recommend, that Mr. Steen has an opportunity to identify a second candidate.
Trustee Steen, would you like to suggest a second, a second appointee today?
There were an awful lot of applications, and, no, I'm not prepared to do that today.
And I agree that Mr. Steen should have the opportunity to relook at the applicants if there's no, another motion, another second vote to support that candidate.
I would suggest that we then defer to next month, or when Trustee Steen is prepared for Quadrant 2, and we proceed to Quadrant 3.
Yes, we have Frank Dunn, owner and insurance broker, and insurance agency. I recommend him. Make a motion, recommend Frank Dunn.
Second the motion.
So Ms. Gonzalez, Mr. Dunn, would you mind if I put you on the spot? Because I noticed that you work for CPS Energy. Would you mind telling us a little bit about, about that experience? You can come up to the
Yeah, I was, worked in a power plants in my, in my young career. And it's quite interesting, when I started in business, I come from, I come from a family of business people. And when I finally decided that I needed to go into business, I had, went and I had a interview, had somebody from the newspaper and come and talk to me. I never left CPS because I didn't like it. I left CPS because I come from a business family. So it was a good job. I loved being there, but it was just time to move on.
Somebody with your background with CPS, I think that's great.
I was in a power plant.
And what, tell me what you did there.
I was a terminal, well, I was, was transitioning from, from when I started in a power plant all the way up to control room operator. So I know a little bit about it. Matter of fact, I might miss it a little bit.
Thank you.
Only that, but Frank and I got to meet when Webhit was on the east side.
Yes.
And so we're all involved in the community. So I've known Frank for quite some time in different capacities. So I'm looking forward again for, for Frank, and I'm glad that he's been identified. He's been a longstanding citizen and, and really cares about the community.
Mayor.
Good to see you, Frank. So I got to know Frank a couple of years, actually several years ago, but if you want to know what the community is thinking, you go to Frank Dunn. So perfect position, and glad you're stepping up for it, Frank. Thank you.
I'm not that important, but it's all good.
If, if we can go ahead, roll call, please.
Trustee Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Trustee Steen?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Chair?
Yes.
Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn is approved for Quadrant 3. We'll move next to Quadrant 4.
And for Peter? Second by Dr. Mackey. Any comments? I think I said my comments earlier. Again, just to stress again that Peter is very active in the community. He was, again, previously at RAC as well. And again, I think it's important that we have individuals with experience that also have faith, and also is very familiar with what it takes to, to be a publicly utility-owned organization. As he's, as we mentioned, he retired from the city of San Antonio. I won't put you on the spot, but my colleagues are open to do so. Again, thank you, Peter. Okay, if we can get roll call?
Trustee Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Trustee Steen?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Chair?
Yes.
Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Anofre is approved for Quadrant 4. We move next to the at-large candidate, Maria Nelson. We would need a motion to approve, Ms. Nelson.
Motion approved, Ms. Nelson.
Second.
I don't have any comments, but if we can go ahead and get a roll, oh, okay, comment from Dr. Romero.
Maria took my planning and land use class at UTSA, and I know she would be a great addition to this committee. And while I celebrate all of the candidates, it is not lost on us that Maria is the only woman being nominated for this committee, kind of like the old days. But welcome, Maria. Thank you.
Yeah, Dr. Romero and I did point that out. This is, again, and I'm going to make this comment mainly for the public. You know, we have Latina leadership, we have LSA, and I'm still very, again, despite the effort, we still get very little candidate, female candidates. And I think it's important, and, you know, Henrietta said it well, it shouldn't be about gender, but having different perspectives and experiences is really important to the conversation. So again, I want to stress to the community that we can't be fighting for board diversity and then not get applicants. And so that, that, I'm going to leave it at that. I think Dr. Romero and I did point that out, but we're hoping that, that the men who serve could also listen to, you know, bring that concern to the table would be nice as well.
You never let us forget it.
Forget that. If we can go ahead and do a roll call?
Trustee Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Trustee Steen?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Chair?
Yes.
Chair?
Yes.
Ms. Nelson is approved as the at-large candidate, and the final is Dr. Villarreal for District 5.
Any discussion? And if not, we can go ahead and do roll call?
Chair Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Trustee Steen?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Chair?
Yes.
Chair?
Yes.
The appointee for District 5 is approved?
So Ms. Gonzalez, I, I have a suggestion. How about, and Dr. Mackey, if you would do this for me, if they send the applications for Quadrant 2 to you, would you select somebody from Quadrant 2? No, no, I want you to do it. No, I don't want to come to another meeting and have somebody voted down, so.
And I'll work with you.
All right, well, I, no, I
No, I mean, I want your feedback, but I definitely will support it.
I want to turn it over to you. Would you do it for me, please?
I would do that. It would be an honor to represent you.
So if we could get the applications for Quadrant 2 sent to Ms. Gonzalez, she'll make that selection.
All right, well, thank you for the trust. If we can go ahead and just make sure that we, that the many notes reflect who was voted in, and then how we will handle Quadrant 2. All right, if we can go ahead and move over to Item Number 11, which is CEO recognition.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, board, board members, for your work today. Today, I'm going to be recognizing our first quarter Core Value Award honorees. And again, these are employee-driven nominations that are made for recognition of employees who are, continue to bring it to work every day and, and exemplify the way in which we are trying to go about serving this community. Our core values are everything. They serve as guiding principles that shape our culture, drive our decision-making, enable us to deliver exceptional service to our community. Our core values define who we are as an organization, and they are at the heart of everything we do. We created this recognition program to highlight individuals and groups whose actions are outstanding examples of our core values in action and are in alignment with our Vision 2027 strategy. We want to celebrate their accomplishments and share these stories with our organization and with you. The individuals we are honoring today consistently model our core values, earning the trust and respect of their colleagues, which is why their peers and colleagues nominated them. They consistently go above and beyond expectations, delivering outstanding results. I always say, and I will continue to, to emphasize, what makes CPS Energy special is its people. And those, those people behind us are, are representation of that. So please, joining me and congratulating them for this well-deserved recognition.
Thank you for all you CEO comments? All right, then, if we can go ahead and review the actions, Dr., Ms. Ramirez?
Yes, ma'am. We had three action items that were open from prior meetings. The request from Trustee Steen to include his comments in the minutes for Agenda Item 7 from the May 20th board meeting, closed today with the approval of those minutes and objections. We have two remaining open items from the recent Risk Management Committee, which I've included here today because it is a committee of the whole. That was a request to provide additional information on the Generation Plan slides. That will be completed through a board communication. And then I have three action items from today. The first is from Trustee Steen, and it was a request to reflect his objections and reasons for voting no on Agenda Item 9. Although that agenda item was deferred until next month, I will include his objections in the minutes appropriately. The second item was from our president and CEO, and it was a request to recirculate the updated document related to Agenda Item 9. That was the deferred agenda item, so it will be updated, reposted with the board materials available for the public and for the trustees to see for the next meeting. And the third I have was a request from Trustee Steen and the Chair. It was a request to send all of the applications to Quadrant 2 to the Chair for selection, and we will go ahead and put the selection for that Quadrant 2 appointee on next month's agenda. That is all of the open items I have, ma'am.
And I guess before we officially conclude, I want to highlight that the mayor celebrated a birthday. He is a year younger. And, oh, I thought he did. But I know for sure tomorrow is Dr. Mackey's birthday, so I want to highlight he's going to celebrate a year younger. So thank you, Mr. Mackey. We recently had just an amazing strategic session, and thank you for your support. Oh, it was his son. I knew somebody in his household had a birthday. So happy birthday, Jonah. And then, and move to conclude.
I move to adjourn.
And second, thank, a good meeting, everyone.